Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. We promise we won't hold you long. Are you guys ready to get started now?
Ready.
Alrighty. My name is Cassandra Floyd. I am the Executive Director of West Graham Boulevard Collaborative. WGBC have advocated for the Northwestern Goldberg, LaSalle Gardens, and Virginia Park for over twenty years, establishing LOUs with Henry Ford Hospital on behalf of the community, addressing socio-economic and environmental issues in the area, and collaborating with businesses throughout the district. The purpose of the meeting today is to bring you up to date on the City of Detroit Future of Health Community Benefits Ordinance that began October 3rd and it ended December 12th. WGBC partnered with Sugar Law and the Detroit People's Platform to amplify the voice of the community in this process. We held four community engagements and discussed every aspect of the process to give the residents an understanding of how the process works. This is how the community was able to discuss and determine what is most needed in the community. Through the discussions, we were able to create thirty community benefits that was presented as a proposal to the Neighborhood Advisory Council to negotiate with the developers on behalf of the community. The Advisory Council is made up of nine members, two residents that must live in the impact area and voted for by the residents that are in the impact area. Three members are selected from the pool of the impact area by residents, by two at-large city councils, and then the city council of that district. Four are selected by the Detroit, the City of Detroit Planning and Development Department. The summary of our proposal today is to give you information about what happened with the benefits once we presented them. The NAC presented them to the developers, and the developers countered offered with benefits that were filled with obligations that would have to be done anyway by healthcare providers. They chose to ignore the community benefits that were determined by the community for the community. So where does that leave us now? WGBC, Sugar Law, and Detroit People's Platform, along with the two NAC members, Joe Adams and Vanita Tompkins, have been petitioning the city council to vote no on the current agreement and negotiate a fair and equitable agreement in exchange for our brownfield tax dollars. The community benefits proposal consists of benefits that are centered around sustaining our community. They were strategically analyzed with a team of professionals to determine a fair and equitable benefit proposal that align with the development profits. Our demands are fair, equitable, and in proportion to the taxes that will be captured over thirty years. And to give you a breakdown of those finances is Theo Pride, community organizer with Detroit People's Platform. Theo, take it away. You're on mute, Theo.
Sorry about that. I did send some slides, but...
Oh, I haven't. I haven't. When you're ready.
Okay, yeah, could you throw those slides up? So as Cassandra said, it's a three billion dollar project. There are three partners here, Henry Ford, MSU, and the Pistons. They are all playing kind of a different role in terms of how much money they get or they don't get. So in terms of the total cost, right, $2.2 billion will be the cost of the hospital. About $400 million will be the cost of the research center, which will be led by MSU. $320 million will be the cost of the luxury housing being proposed by the Pistons. And there is a parking structure that will be a part of kind of the housing and research side of it, about $57 million. Next slide. So the tax incentives being requested here, it's about, it's about $300 million in tax incentives being requested. The hospital is receiving no tax incentives in terms of abatements and tax increment financing. But they will have, of course, their own kind of nonprofit tax exemption kind of that they seek just as a matter of them being a nonprofit hospital. Well, in terms of the breakdown here, there is, the incentive package is a compilation of abatements and tax increment financing. So about $54 million in abatements, that's CRAs and NEZs. $231 million in a transformational brownfield, which is essentially a super tax incentive, if you will. You can collect sales tax and every tax that you can think of. In terms of where that money is coming from, so we can get a kind of a sense of it, $38 million will be coming from the city's general fund, $40 million from different school entities, including DPSCD, Wayne County RISA, and state educational tax. $10 million will be coming from the local library. MSU will be seeking about $30 million of that transformational, $39 million of that transformational brownfield. And the garage will be getting about $14 million of that transformational brownfield. In terms of the luxury housing, the luxury housing is receiving $220 million of the tax incentives being requested. That's about eighty-one percent of the incentives being requested, and that's about seventy percent of the total housing cost. Next slide. So breaking down this luxury housing piece, because I really think it is the piece that is most inequitable and the piece that we should be focusing on, because it is receiving eighty-one percent of the tax incentives. Like I said, $220 million coming from Transformational Brownfield and abatements. But they're also receiving Lytech, which is a federal low-income housing tax credit, federal historic tax credits, state tax credits, state historic tax credits. Potentially, right, this particular project can be publicly funded at seventy-five, eighty percent. And so in terms of looking at the overall total amount of public dollar, it goes far past, or not far past, but it goes even beyond the state and local tax that we see here in Detroit, Michigan. Next slide. Oh, I think that's it.
Coming up next, we have Joe Adams from the Neighborhood Advisory Council to break down what that process was like. I guess part one of this three-part process. What was it like? How did you vote and why?
Okay, so hi, Joanne Adams. I live in the Virginia Park community, and I'm a board member of West Graham Boulevard Collaborative. So the process, I was actually really encouraged at the beginning, probably naively so, that this was a real opportunity for community to have a voice and to ask for the type of benefits that we needed and wanted within the community. I was wrong. It was a carefully choreographed process that, particularly by the planning department, you know, we were given the opportunities and concerns, and they didn't really want to hear anything else outside of that. So as we went through the process, we were transferring information from one format to another to present to the developers. We managed to get all of our demands onto the initial submission to the developers. And then they didn't respond in the same format as we were, so it was hard to cross-check what they had responded to and what they hadn't. It sort of came back, but basically, they were not interested in a lot of the things that we felt were necessary to prevent displacement, gentrification within the community, and opportunity for self-determination within the community. So at the end of the day, I voted no. And the three predominant reasons I voted no was that there were a lack of protections for the majority of our community. We were asking for contributions to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We were asking for substantial rental assistance and down payment assistance. We were asking for the school and library money to be reimbursed, and also an element of home repairs, sort of more substantial than we've got. But all of these items, what we ended up with was $2 million for home repairs over five years and $500,000 for rental assistance, not very well, none of it very well defined, to target the people most in need. So there's no language in there about fifty percent AMI or length of time being in Detroit. So that, and also, these were offset against any fines Henry Ford Health would have to pay against the executive order for hiring people. So it was just a complete disregard for the effect that this development will have on the majority of our population. So that was the first reason. The second reason was, I sort of alluded to it slightly earlier, was the lack of self-determination for the community. We're kind of in this weird situation right now, where the city and the developers, or the people with money in the city, keep control of the funds. And in exchange, you have to be loyal and prove to the developers that you're a worthy process. And there's just, you know, for a lot of people, that's too much to ask. So we were asking for a community investment fund that would be managed in the community, by the community, for the community. And this was, we were asking for a million dollars a year over the length of the, I think for the first ten years, actually. And this would like build up and be something that we could then hand out our own funding, if you like, to community groups, whether it be nonprofit, co-ops, small businesses, just something that would give us the opportunity to develop our own independence, if you like, from the current models of funding that we have currently. And then finally, there's no accountability for the community in this agreement. I've just read through it, I've read through it too many times to be sane anymore, but there is not, where the city are getting benefits, like the fifty-five million infrastructure, it's really tight. That can be monitored, and that can be, they can be held to account for that. Where there's things for the community, there's a lot of words like encourage. What was the other ones? Make reasonable efforts. And that type of language that isn't accountable, I mean, it's, you could go back. And then one was particularly, just a quote from it, "One or more developers will continue to explore opportunities to collaborate with local area nonprofits." And then they gave some examples of them. But there's no commitment to do it. There's no monetary value on it. There's no time scale on it. And it will not be able to be monitored in that respect. And the other area that was particularly upsetting to me was in terms of the business spend. So they're saying they're going to spend $100 million with disadvantaged, or women businesses, and I'm going to say the words that black and brown businesses and things like that. But the wording is developers shall make reasonable efforts to procure. So all in all, lack of protections for our community, lack of ability for self-determination within our community, and lack of accountability. So I had to vote no.
Thank you so much for sharing, Joe. I'm just gonna keep rolling and pick up right where you left off, actually, and talk about what is in, what is actually in the agreement? What was, what was the final proposal coming out of the NAC? And we know that final proposal was heavily influenced by the developers and by the Planning and Economic Department. So I'm going to go through a spreadsheet that's going to look like a lot. The promise is not going to take all night, seven to ten minutes tops. And then I'll give you the link in the chat, so you can look at it at your own leisure. But the team and I, we went through and actually looked at each provision and analyzed who's benefiting from this. Is this a community benefit? And the majority of things in this agreement are not community benefits. The way we look at this and the way we deserve to have this agreement analyzed, and it's not even an issue of what we deserve or don't deserve. It's looking at what's an equitable exchange for our tax dollars. And we're paying out $300 million in public money. What are we getting for that public money? That is the question here. So the first thing that you'll see a lot of conversation about is affordable housing. That's a partial community benefit. A few people, a handful of people, will be able to live in affordable housing. However, there are only thirteen units that are affordable for the average Detroiter. And there are a few more at fifty percent AMI, so it's still a little higher than what's the affordable range in the neighborhood. That's not a full community benefit, because as Theo and Joe have talked about before, they're also getting tax subsidies from other funding pots, state funding pots. So is that a community benefit that they're making a concession about? Not, not really. So we categorize that as a partial community benefit, except in Section Eight vouchers. If they are going to get Lytech funding and receive funding from MISTHA, that already becomes a requirement that's pending legislation at the state level. So we are saying no. Simply accepting Section Eight vouchers with these other conditions attached, with these other factors around, is not in and of itself a community benefit. Housing accessibility, as Joe mentioned, you'll see a lot of language in here that says things like, well, we'll make a reasonable effort, you know, things like that, things that are not binding, essentially. So there's a lot of flowery language about housing accessibility and universal design, but it's not binding, right? So no, that's not a community benefit. The Home Repair Fund, there's money in there, a little tiny pot of money for home repairs for Detroitors. But the tricky thing about this particular provision is that there's an offset provision. So the agreement says, hey, we'll make a $2 million contribution to a home repair fund, but we get to deduct that $2 million if we don't follow the executive order, which requires us to hire fifty-one percent of Detroitors. They have not presented any kind of actual plan to do that. And unfortunately, the development, all the other developments that have come through this process haven't met that goal. So if they're not meeting that goal, they will be required to pay a fine, to go into workforce training. This is basically, you know, a wash. So it's money for home repair. A handful of people will be able to get home repairs, about twenty people a year, a very, very small amount. But, you know, the money to developers, basically, they're going to get a credit for money they would otherwise owe the city of Detroit. So that's not a full community benefit. The same is the true with rental assistance. There's a small pot of money available for rental assistance. Lots of questions around that. What's the eligibility criteria? Who gets the money? Is there a cap? Can one landlord gobble up all the money? Plenty of questions. But the major red flag is that, again, that's an offset provision here. So whatever is paid in rental assistance, they're deducting that from money that would somewhat, somewhat already be owed to, not somewhat would be owed to the city of Detroit. So it's not a net gain for Detroitors overall. The hospital itself, this is the correct, this is the big controversial area. They're saying, we're building this wonderful hospital. That is a benefit. But you know what? The hospital expansion itself is not seeking tax incentives. The hospital expansion itself is happening, no matter what the council votes on. So this is not a community benefit. And Henry Ford is a nonprofit hospital. That means they receive tax exemption already for doing things that improve medical care and providing charitable care, discounted medical care in the community, things of that sort. So they already receive credit for this in order to maintain their taxes and status. They can count this. Research facility, similar. So MSU and the Pistons are getting together, and they want to do this research facility, or excuse me, not the Pistons, but MSU and Henry Ford are looking to do this new research facility. But this is another tax exempt activity that can count towards Henry Ford's taxes and status. So we say that is a partial community benefit, not full. Urgent fast-track care services, again, what is a nonprofit hospital supposed to do? Provide care. So this is one of those activities that are already, we already subsidize through our tax dollars. And the language needs a lot of cleaning up here. The way this is described, it does not, it will not translate into urgent care as we think about it. So that is one to watch and push back on. Behavior health care, behavior health space. Again, this is something that Henry Ford already receives credit for as a nonprofit hospital. The same with uncompensated care. There's kind of this whole list going down here of things that Henry Ford, as a nonprofit health provider, already receives our tax subsidies to do. So this is something that we call double dipping. You're not, we should not double dip in the community, these different community benefit pots. So uncompensated care, community health impact workers in the impact area, these are things that they already do, so they need to be removed from the CVA provision. Medical resources for high school students, the same. And actually, this one was a little stingy anyways, a handful of equipment. We could do better than that. Providing primary care services, doing community fairs. A particular medical training program, infant mortality services. These are already things that Henry Ford, as an institution, does and keyword receives credit for already. Implicit bias training, already required by law, particular for Henry Ford, following the Michigan executive order that's in place, directing healthcare providers to do this, essentially. So this came about during COVID. It hasn't expired. It's still a requirement. MSU already has a DEI plan in place. So the combination of this being required by law already, MSU is already doing this. It's not new. Come out of the CVA provision. You probably hear a lot about scholarships. Of course, we want our babies to go to school. So they say we're providing scholarships for STEM competitions. This one, excuse me, this is not the college scholarship, but this is a high school event, math and science type activities, already covered by taxes and status. And this is a program that is already in place with the Pistons. They're already doing it. More double dipping. Trade apprenticeship programs, non-binding language. Job fairs, already happening. We know a little something about that with West Graham Boulevard Collaborative. Take this out of the CVA. It is not a new commitment. A so-called pipeline with historically black colleges and universities, non-binding language. If we want to make it a benefit, make it binding, make it a mandatory piece. A nurse apprenticeship program, great activity already required by, already covered by Henry Ford's tax exempt status. Bring it out of the CVA. There's a paragraph that alludes to, kind of name drops, a lot of educational opportunities, partnership opportunities. A lot of these are pre-existing programs. Take it out of the CVA. And you see the same thing with medical assistance, Marvel Medicine Program, healthcare pathways, activities already covered by Henry Ford's tax exempt status. Double dipping. Take it out of the CVA. Band the box, already prohibited under city code. That is not a new benefit. Take it out. Priority review of applications. Again, we know something about that with West Graham Boulevard Collaborative. But the way that you need to enforce this is you need a data sharing agreement. You need to be able to monitor what's going on. It's not an easy thing to do, so we put this as a partial community benefit, because we want people to have job retention, not just getting hired quickly and fired quickly. So that is a partial community benefit. Again, expanded hospital and research center accessibility, that's already a legal requirement of Henry Ford by law, so take it out. Infrastructure improvements, as Joe mentioned, absolutely not. It's reimbursable through our taxes and it's... A website? Come on, a website already exists. Take that out. That is not a community benefit. Northwest Goldberg, who best we love, our neighbors at the Northwest Goldberg Organization. We're happy for them, but that is a pre-existing relationship. Bring it out of that CVA. Brilliant Detroit, there's a small commitment for a little teaspoon of money for Brilliant Detroit. We say that's a partial community benefit. We have no issues with Brilliant Detroit, but we do recognize that that relationship, that grant relationship, was already in place. So it is not entirely clear what is new and what is old. The Pistons wheelchair team, come on, no, not a CVA for working with your own sub-organization. That is not a community benefit. We're coming down the homestretch. Language about working with other organizations, not a community benefit. There are micro grants, about $300,000 available, but over a period of fifteen years, I believe. I have to go back and look at that text again, but it's not a lot of money per year when you get down to it. So is it a community benefit? Yes. Is it a big community benefit? No. So just for the sake of time, I just want to highlight perhaps two other things, and you'll get the link here. Small business plan, there's a lot of excitement about working with small business owners and saying that we're going to work with them. We're going to get a plan. We're going to spend $100 million with them. But that language is non-binding. You know what would work? Making it binding. The last two things I want to point out here, and I'll stop sharing my screen here, is Fairbanks Elementary School. This property has been vacant and voided for a long time. And the commitment here, it's not much of a commitment. It's just to tell the community, they have a meeting, and say, we'll work with the community to do something with the building at some point in time. But the language is non-binding, so that is not a community benefit. And then you have a lot of language by the city of Detroit, saying the city of Detroit is going to fund money for Joseph Walker Williams and do other things. You know what? We pay our tax dollars to the city of Detroit already. So what we pay for already is not a community benefit. So we're going to drop the link in here for you, so you can take more time and go through it by yourself. But what do we need to remember? If we've already, if our tax dollars are already subsidized, that's not new. It's not a community benefit. So what Henry Ford is already doing as a nonprofit hospital, and what the city is already doing, we pay our tax dollars towards, that's not a community benefit. New money is new benefits, new obligations. So again, we'll drop the link, and you can go through that at your own time. But it's important to know that. Now I want to swing it back to Cassandra and Joe to talk about some positive aspects, some wins. There's been a lot of things we're not pleased with, but there have been some things we should be very pleased with and very proud of ourselves that have happened along the way. So let me turn it back to Cassandra and Joe.
Are you there, Cassandra? I can get started. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. I was on mute. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so the first one is unity. We started this process, oh, August, September last year, started between the three organizations, West Graham Boulevard Collaborative, Detroit People's Platform, and Sugar Law, how to approach it, and we have not been divided. So we've stuck with it, and we're all very good friends now.
Yes, we have stayed strong in solidarity. But another one of our wins is it's the first time ever that NAC Community Slate winning have won top three positions. Through the voting of the residents in the impact area, we were able to have three top wins. Joanne Adams and Stephen Remmer, which he had to accuse himself because he moved out of the impact area. And then Diane, what's Diane's last name?
McMillan.
McMillan, yes. So that was the first ever, and that was a big win for us.
Now you go.
Okay, WGBC, community demands. It was the main... Okay, WGBC um, Community Demands. It was the major, and we were the major and strongest voice in this process due to community engagement. Uh, that really, really gave us um, the big push that we needed to be the voice. And the people spoke through their participation in the process, which carried a great deal of weight.
Yeah, and the demands the, that we managed to get through were ones that actually were needed and wanted with our community. So um, we also, we um, tried to introduce a racial equity tool into the proceedings, but I mean, we were unsuccessful in the end. I was voted down on by the rest of the NAC. Other than Venita, um, in terms of using a racial equity tool, but the um, we raised the profile of it and we also raised it through our community demands, which we put through a racial equity tool to confirm that that would, you know, is what the community needed.
Yes, actually, um, WGBC started really early in the process with contacting Henry Ford Hospital and advocating that they incorporate a racial equity framework tool to determine that the development would be equitable. And they didn't buy it. Uh, we tried with the NAC, it didn't go through. But I believe it will be um, a paramount tool, maybe in future developments. Um, by the city being comprised of over eighty percent African Americans, it should be a tool that's adopted by the city of Detroit. And then the next one, one of our biggest wins were our successful community turnouts, thanks to Detroit People's Platform. We brought, we were able to um, do phone canvassing of over seven thousand and six hundred and seventy-four people. Door canvassing of two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one. Uh, we did sign petitions of two hundred and eighty-seven. And Joe, I think you have some more numbers for us, for the attendance with the CBO?
Yeah, the CBO was strongly attended. Um, like the first meeting, there were a hundred and forty-two, a hundred of whom were in person. And at the final meeting, a hundred and thirty-two, sixty-seven in person. And then the averages were, they were average attendance to each meeting of a hundred and ten. And seventy of those were in person. We, we did have one meeting that was on Zoom only, so it was, it was encouraging to see that, you know, attendance and interest and activate, you know, activating the community didn't die off through the process. People kept coming out and kept listening. And to a large extent, that's what allowed us, you know, that gave us the strength to be able to control the narrative. So that our narrative, you know, we've been calling it luxury housing, much to the disgust, I would say, or most of the Pistons, who absolutely do not want it referred to as luxury housing, but we now have um, city council members and a lot of other people using our language. So that was really encouraging.
And we were also able to um, magnify the fact that um, this development is trying to create their own neighborhood for um, the people that are going to be working in the hospital and um, at Michigan State University. And um, the Pistons Performance Center. Um, this is, you know, and this was seen by even the city council, that you're trying to create your own little bubble. It will not be something that um, the city of Detroit residents will be utilizing. It will be specifically for them. So um, um, I wanted to use that phrase, that the terminology that you gave, Linda, what was it?
So uh, what's happening through our analysis is that they are segregating Detroit, not only by race and class, as we have seen with the developments in Midtown Downtown. They're also segregating Detroit by race, class, and occupation. Because this housing has been described by the developers as workforce housing. Meaning that the folks who've come to work in the newly created research center and uh, expand, expanded hospital will be, they will offer housing to those folks and by their own admission, many of those are six-figure jobs. So again, not only are we seeing our city become segregated by race and class, but now it's by occupation.
So that takes us on, um, onto holding our own. Um, I don't know how closely you follow other CBO processes in the city of Detroit, but they are usually done by this point. Um, this is a time span where well, they have moved on to another CBO, but it would be signed, sealed, and delivered at this point. And we have given them quite a bit to chew on, and it's been delayed for quite a while. Um, as a matter of fact, I think it took them seven to eight, I mean, seven weeks before the CBA was signed. Is that correct, Joe?
Yeah, I think, yeah. Uh huh. Yeah, there was from the twelfth of December, and I think I received it, which I didn't sign it, the beginning of February. So yeah, good period. Um, the other thing that, I mean, we're sort of talking about it, how we do, but this has been really encouraging as a grassroots effort. We have had a number of people who've not spoken out in previously, but have come, uh, come to the meetings or come to Zoom and spoken out. So it's a good base for future community development or community voices.
Mm-hmm. And that is it?
Well, we're particularly happy that as a result of two very, very long planning and economic development committee meetings, it was passed through to Detroit City Council, but without recommendation. So that was a good move. You know, it's going to Detroit City Council, we think tomorrow. But it hasn't, yeah, they haven't recommended it through the committee. So that was very encouraging. Our voices had been heard.
The people have spoken. Power to the people.
Yeah.
And so now it brings us to our um, top five ask. Um, we are asking that an annual one point five, can you go back to that slide, Tanya? Okay, I'm sorry. We are asking that an annual one point five million contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the life of the tax incentives received by the Future of Health Project. Joe, you want to take the next one?
Myself. Um, we want the reimbursement of the school and library taxes, as Theo showed us earlier. Um, they are trying to say that that is not something that happens, that schools and library funding isn't affected, but it's clearly stated in the Brownfield Plan. And we want it reimbursed. It's enough. We need a future for our schools and libraries.
And we want a major contribution by the developers to a community investment fund that support community ownership and resident economic opportunities. This is a big one that um, the community talked about extensively. That would be a future blueprint for our um, next generation. Um, we would like to be sustainable and we should be sustainable. If you're using all our tax dollars, then we should be getting a lateral exchange for them. And this is one way to create a sustainable community where we don't have to be waiting for the city of Detroit to give us what we need. We also want services for vulnerable, vulnerable seniors, including transportation and neighborhood recreational services. The seniors um, were very, very adamant about having some form of transportation. Now, Henry Ford came back with a benefit that looked it like it was um, alluding to this, but it wasn't. It is um, their benefit was they would contact their health provider and coordinate transportation for them with their health provider. As opposed to them just providing, they have a fleet of transportation that they give to the majority of all of their facilities. And it, it wouldn't be anything for them to give um, some of those fleet um, to some of the seniors in the area.
And then our final top five was that they transfer Fairbank School, which it's been owned by Henry Ford Health for fifteen years. It's been boarded up. It's smack in the middle of our community. And we want it. We want it in a community-controlled land trust. We have a number of discussions about the type of things that we could do with it. And this also goes nicely with the community investment fund. Um, in that we could have a small business incubator. We could have day, day facilities for seniors. We could have childcare. And the two, you know, we would have the land. It's not being used. And community land trusts are very popular now as a way for communities to become sustainable and not reliant on the big money interests around us for their largesse.
Yes, this is an affordable housing um, method that can be used in our community to sustain it as well. So these are our top fives. So um, call it, call, call to action. So, you know, you guys have been so supportive. And we, we appreciate your support during this process. You've been outstanding, but we are urging you to email your city council representative and join us tomorrow at the city council meeting at ten o'clock by in-person or in, by Zoom and voice your opinion. We are stronger together, and this is a crucial moment for the city of Detroit. This community benefits package is designed to sustain the communities and residents of the city of Detroit. And we will set a precedence as to how development is done in our city when using our tax dollars. And here to give you more on the call to action is Halima Castles, artist, facilitator, community activist, and mom to elaborate on our call to action. Halima?
Okay. Hi, everybody. Um, thank you for having me. Um, so I just wanted to, I really wanted to talk uh, quickly about the future as I see it for my kids. I'm a mom of three. Um, two of my uh, children are younger, school-aged children. And one has um, a severe asthma allergy, right? So we, uh, we live in the north end, just north of the impact area. Um, usually having to drive all the way out to Children's in Troy to be seen. Sometimes waiting over twelve hours at Children's uh, down here to be seen uh, or to get a room. Um, it's unconscionable that these folks would be double dipping and asking for things that they're supposed to already be providing to our community. And then on top of it, asked to take money from our schools and, and, and special needs children at that to fund mostly what is a luxury development. So I don't know what type of future this is, but with the, the way that they've been acting and the way that they're continuing to make it extra confusing and try not to answer questions and try to rename things, um, it's clear that we really do have to make our voices heard. I live in a family home. My family moved here off the farm. I'm a third generation North Ender. My next door neighbor grew up with my dad. Her grandson and um, nephew, great nephew live across the street, on the other side of me, my sister. My children know that their community is their family. When we get rid of affordable housing or just any uh, semblance of what Detroit has been and has meant to so many people and the ability to live, work, or be part of that, we're destroying families, communities, and our children's future. Um, so that's where I'm coming from. It's a lot of pieces. I'm trying to put it together so that I can explain it to my six-year-old. She's like, when uh, whenever they're asked, you know, to do something like, what do your parents do? My mommy yells at city council all day long. But I'm doing this for you. And I need you to understand, and I try to break it down so that I truly understand it and that they can understand it too, so that they can join in with us. So I'm here. I was a part of a previous NAC. I'm happy to talk about that. We did get a community uh, fund. They haven't said any words about how it's going to operate and where the money currently is, but we weren't able to negotiate that. And so I do see wins and steps forward, but I do see a major uh, resistance to community determination and to the, the legacy of who has built and sustained Detroit. Happy to talk to anybody. Um, I'm here and I'll be there tomorrow. Thank you.
And just to piggyback off uh, Halima's um, comment, you know, uh, with her children um, having severe asthma. Um, it was brought up at the CBO meetings that um, we desperately need a urgent care in our um, community. And we don't have one, I don't even think we have one in the city of Detroit. I haven't even seen any in the city of Detroit. However, Henry Ford Ha- Hospital has numerous urgent cares throughout metropolitan Detroit. Um, uh, to name a few, Southfield and Livonia. So when brought, when it was brought up at the um, meeting, their um, solution was to put the urgent care into the emergency room. Now, if you have been to the emergency room, you already know it's already chaotic. So to put an urgent care there would just make it more crazy. So in order, I mean, this is their solution to not have to do anything for the city of Detroit residents. So it, we are urging you, we are urging you to lift your voice. Join us. We are stronger together. And we need to be in solidarity when it comes to what we need for our community, for our children. We need you to show up Tuesday in person or to Zoom in. And we need you to email your city council people. Be active, because this is, this, our eyes is on the CBO. Our eyes. And now I'll open it up for Q and A. Anybody have any questions? Feel free to come off of mute. Do we have any questions in the um, chat?
Yeah, just come off of mute. I was trying to.
I think I saw something in chat from AJ. Let me send it. How come I don't even have chat on my thing? I don't even have it down here. Oh, here it go. So. Let's see. No questions? It, it is two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one door knocks since we knocked doors in the impact area more than once. And it is seven thousand six hundred and seventy-four calls made since we called some in the impact area multiple times. Okay. Is there a number for all the items they list as community benefits that are already covered? Like fifty-two out of sixty? And could we qualify, quantify those because they say it's over six hundred million in benefits? But clearly they are double counting. Do we, do we have a um, account on how many um, benefits they are claiming as, that's benefits, that's not?
No, but with our spreadsheet, we could break that down. It just take, would take a little bit. Just a little bit, a different cut on the analysis, but I think that's a really good point.
Yeah, very good.
Al- also too, can I jump in real quick? Also too, Wendy did a breakdown of uh, trying to quantify the actual um, right, the, the, the benefits that were beyond the actual project cost, right? What were the costs of the benefits on top of the project cost? And I think she came up with something like eight million, but she included the affordable housing. So if you take that out, And I think she came up with something like eight million, but she included the affordable housing, so if you take that out, it's only close to, it's closer to like five million. I think another thing to think about too, like the absurdity of the package they presented in terms of the cost. Six hundred and four million dollars in community benefits, think about this. They're asking for three hundred million dollars in tax incentives. If you have six hundred and four million dollars to spend on community benefits, then why, why do you need the tax incentives? Just cut it in half and pay for it yourself. It's absurd.
Sure that, sure that. Um is the recently developed and now open DreamTrot Artist Maker Live Work. Space on Holton Street in Northwest Goldberg perceived as a community benefit? Can anyone answer that? Oh, you, you did, didn't you, Tanya?
Yeah, I.
No, the agreement speaks of the Northwest Goldberg Boot Fest, okay, five K sponsorship. Okay.
So I'll, I'll ask the question more precisely, I understand that DreamTroy is not part of this community ask. But at the same time, it's, it's a live developed project, there's. I think at this point, there's probably. Close to seventy uh artist-makers living in that space. And I guess my question more precisely is, is there any synergy between DreamTroy? And uh your community group, and if there isn't, I wonder why, why there isn't.
I can speak to that, I I have invited Orin and other folks. Um so I I'm not sure, you know, if they followed up, but this, this push right now. Is so that more people can basically live their dream. You know, DreamTroy is doing it, and they didn't take any taxpayer dollars, they did it, they figured it out. And they're, and have a beautiful space, why should billionaires be coming to the community? And saying, oh, we'll give you an urgent care, oh, we'll give you, you know, these things that you're already supposed to be getting for your tax dollars. And we're gonna count that and take more of your tax dollars for the next thirty-five years, you know?
Um I, I'll, I'll weigh in on this question, if I understand DreamTroy, it is a pretty. Specialized kind of housing program. And it, what it doesn't do, it doesn't address or mitigate. The harms that will be done to seniors and households with children who will be displaced from the area. And as I understand DreamTroy, it's, it's housing that's basically designed for artists. Uh many of them, single artists. So whereas there might be an opportunity for collaboration around some kind of. Mitigation for art in in this development project, our push has been to. Get the developer to respond to the harm they will be creating by bringing in. Luxury high-rise apartments that will definitely create pressure on. Not only rents in that impact area, but in the new, in the nearby area. It sounds like you're probably familiar with the neighborhood, you know what's happened in the North End as a result of. Renter pressures coming out of downtown Midtown Development, so.
Okay. Oh, can I just say one more thing about that too? Um that, that project has done a great job of having affordable rents, but like you said, mostly geared towards artists and single people. However, in my neighborhood, in small apartments for family flats. In the last five years, we've seen people's rent double in thirty days. And there is no law against that, so how devastating is that to a single mom or some or family? You know, they've been living here for ten years, and all of a sudden, they've got to figure out how they can pay double. And my house, which is a family house, I this, my kids are fourth generation, in the last ten years, the value has quintupled. I haven't fixed anything, okay, I haven't fixed anything, I just maintain it as best as I can. But the only reason the value has gone up five hundred percent is because of a white gaze. People now want to live here from other places that haven't been here for the whole time. So of course, if that's happening here, that's gonna happen over there.
Actually, too, can I jump in, it's happening right now, right, so in the New Center area where they just built the Boulevard, just over the last five years, right? Uh units under five hundred dollars have decreased by about uh s- sixty-five percent. Right, so it's lost about three hundred and fifty units just in that area. Um median income has increased uh way above the city average. But the black population has decreased way above the city average, so New Center is gentrifying right now as we speak.
I don't have anything else except um certainly, you know, I would say. You know, from an advocacy perspective and, you know, a community member just barely got redlined out of the impact area. The interesting artificially small impact area, you know, anybody who's on board with equitable development. You know, and wants to work together to achieve um some of the goals that we've talked about today, you know, and in line with. Not passing this money on to billionaires, we're keeping it right in our neighborhood, you know, let's definitely keep in touch. And work together towards the big equitable development picture in our neighborhoods.
With that being said, I just want to thank everybody for um coming on tonight. And thank you panel um for um this awesome presentation. We'll be um uploading it to the Facebook page where it'll be accessible, and you can review it. Um we hope to see you and hear your voice tomorrow.
Yes.
Um Linda, did you want to add anything to that?
No, other than to thank the panel uh as well, great job. And this uh recording will be made available so that folks can pass it on to their neighbors and others in the community. Uh and just to say, uh Detroit People's Platform and Equitable Detroit, we're the citywide CBA Coalition. We've uh been monitoring these large-scale projects over the last um since twenty seventeen. Um and so we, you know, we're, we're trying very hard to make sure that Detroiters. Get what they deserve, given the huge public investment, nearly. Close to two billion dollars in tax investments to subsidize mostly private economic development. It would be different if we were investing our tax money in building new climate-resilient schools. Or social housing for our families, our, you know, mixed-generation communities. I think all Detroiters want to see that kind of development. And when we look at the survey, the poll that was taken last year, asking Detroiters, what kind of development do you want to see? Eighty percent said we want to see development in our neighborhood, we want development. And truly affordable housing, we want investment in our libraries, in our schools, in our public rec centers. So Detroiters are dreaming of and imagining neighborhoods where we all can live the kind of. Life that they're creating for the folks down at the Future of Health. So I say, you know, thank you for coming out, join us, stay tuned, Cassandra and Joe. And Tanya will make sure that you have a way to contact us and, you know, we're still in the game, so show up tomorrow. Let your feelings, let your voice be heard, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Leggett, for your um engagement with us tonight. And if you um like, please keep in touch with us through Facebook. Um let me provide my email address through the chat. Um let's see, just in case you have any questions and you want to join us in this. Right? So if you have any more, any more questions before we sign off? Is that it for tonight, anything you want to add, Ms. Myers Phillips?
This was a, this was an hour of power, so. I did my best with those slides.
You did an excellent job, we all did our best, we've been giving our all to this project since. It was announced in February of twenty twenty-three, and it has been exhausting but well worth. The work that we've put into it, and we appreciate your presence, we look forward to seeing you and hearing your voice tomorrow. Thank you, have a good night, and God bless you.
Stay safe, everyone.
Yes.
Good night all.
Good night, stop the recording.